Order tonight's regular Board of Education meeting for Wednesday, April 17th, here in the boardroom. We can start with the roll call, please, Tammy.
Nobs Ashback, Paul Crew.
Here.
Brett Waller.
Here.
Jimmy Ratliff.
Here.
John Smith.
Here.
Maria Volby.
Here.
Linda Weyland.
Here.
Kevin Blake.
Here. We could all stand as we're able for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Good evening and welcome to the Merrill Larry Public Schools Board of Education Meeting. MAPS respects the role our elected board members serve and the function of our board meetings. Board members and administrators are committed to working collaboratively to provide our students a safe learning environment and the highest level of achievement. This meeting is a formal event and professional conduct is the expectation for all in attendance. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Sample. Tammy, any forms for public comment this evening? All right, I did not receive any either. Let's move right into recognition. This evening, the board would like to start by recognizing Dee Vandergees. Dee has gone above and beyond to help her student and their family through a tragic situation, and we would like to recognize her this evening.
I don't know anybody who can find your numbers. The rank is out of tragedy. And the MAPS, school district, between the high school, coach, these are all there for my kids. I can't ask for better community between the public and the schools. And Dee, you were there for my kids the whole time, for the funerals of both of the kids. She was there from the time the public doors opened for the funeral till when it closed. And I even said you could go. She said, I told you I'm going to be here. I do stay the whole time. So all I can say is thank you to everybody who supported our family through this hard time. It's still hard. It's just that Marilyn is here as well. All I can say is thank you.
Well, hi, Billy. The tulips are in, are assigned in the symbol of Parkinson's awareness. And the month of April is the Parkinson's awareness. So I hope everybody really reads up on him. You know, there is Parkinson's, that dementia and hallucination can really follow it. The carnations, that was my mom's favorite flower.
Next, the board would like to take a moment to recognize and thank the Bledsoe family and Bledsoe Cheese Factory for the many years they have supported our schoolwide fundraising efforts. We are grateful to have a strong community willing to partner with us for these events. We wish the Bledsoes the very best in their future endeavors. Anyone from the Bledsoes that were able to make it tonight? Excellent.
So we just wanted to thank them for all of their contributions that they've done for multiple fundraisers that we do out at Maple Grove. Without their support, it would certainly make it a little more difficult for us until we really miss them. But we really are honored to have had them in our back pocket for all of these reasons. We want to thank them. So thank you all.
Next, the board would like to recognize this evening Lori Pago for going above and beyond by assisting administration during the DPI title monitor. Lori collected and uploaded required title documents to the DPI website. She also agreed to participate in the monitoring process on behalf of the CNI office in the absence of a MAPS director or curriculum and instruction. As always, Lori went above and beyond her responsibilities. Next, recognition this evening, although I don't think he was able to make it, was Quinn Steckbauer. We're scoring his 1,000th point for the Merrill High School basketball boys team over his basketball career. Quinn scored his 1,000th point fittingly against Wasaw West. Quinn is the seventh player in Merrill history to score 1,000 points and is currently ranked in second place with 1,259 points, behind only that of Paul Jespersen at 1,696 points. I believe he's going to head to UW Oshkosh next year to share his talents there. I'm sure he'll be missed next year. Congratulations to Quinn. Our next recognition this evening is for head coach Jake Shallow and the varsity boys basketball team for winning their, the school's first ever conference championship in boys varsity basketball. It was 97 years in the making. Congratulations. Our next recognition this evening, last but certainly not least, is Grace Schultz for being recognized by the Wisconsin Interscholastic Swim Coaches Association. It's honorable mention Allstate in the 100 back for the Division Two.
Your moment to talk about your season a little bit? See that? I know we've talked a lot about the success of the swimming team, so if you just want to build on that, would you use some accolades for your recognition in state? Anything you'd like to share on that?
Just working hard all season and achieving goals in your city. Hasn't had a scum stadium now or bought a new stadium.
Next, I'd like to have our student Board of Education representative report. Abe was unable to attend, so we'll let the room clear for a quick second, and then I'll turn it over to Bella Schroyer. Whenever you're set, Bella. Thank you.
The musical this year was Mamma Mia, and the performances were on April 3rd through 7th. They did very well, and it was really fun to watch. Prom was last weekend. There was a lot of people at the grand march, and the dance at the Expo Center was super fun. There were raffles, and afterwards, Lessin Gyms hosted a post-prom bowling party. There was free food, free drinks, free candy, more raffles, and it was just a lot of fun. New iPads are deploying this last week, but because of the snow day and the delay, we had to bring it into this week. ACT Aspire testing is going on this week at the high school for freshmen and sophomores, when we've switched around flex period and eighth period to accommodate the testing, and everyone's being very quiet in the hallways to respect them. Softball is going very well. We won against BASH for the first time in four years. Baseball, soccer, and track are all doing very well as well. Ms. Volby wanted us to talk about something that students like suggested to us, and I got a suggestion to talk about like athlete, student athlete stress. We all have lots of homework, and that we're all struggling to get done, because this year we have to travel far for different games, and it's without having Wi-Fi on the bus, and kids like getting the bus sick on the bus, it's really hard to try to catch up on our classes. So kids are pretty stressed out right now. And most of the homework's on the iPads, so there's no way to really work that unless you have Wi-Fi. Not sure what solutions are for that, but I thought it'd be good to bring up and talk about.
Bussing, bussing contracts coming up. The bussing contract's coming up.
Thank you, Bella. Does anyone have any questions or comments for Bella, our student board rep? Go ahead, Linda.
I think that's great that you brought that all to our attention, and I would like to actually hear more, if we get any more information from the other students like that. I think it's good feedback. Thank you.
Thanks, Linda. Anyone else have anything to add? All right. Thank you very much, Bella. Next, we have the administrative reports. I'll turn that over to Dr. Sample.
Thank you, Kevin. My computer's connecting and not connecting. So, that's why I can't hear you. I will visualize the spotlight on education. I have been through it, and one of the things that, there's a lot of good information there. But then there's also a lot of, a lot of commentary, and the spotlight on education this time focuses on positive behavior intervention supports, restorative practice at the middle school, and the culture and climate of our district and every one of our buildings. So while there's a lot of good information there, I think in the future too, we want to be able to provide more data, so that you can take a quick glance. The information that's provided is very, very solid, and it does describe what's going on in the buildings, but then also I think we can accompany that with more data, and it becomes easier to track with our districts, especially with student wellness that is going to be at the, one of our goals that's coming out of the strategic plan of the meetings. Anything else on the spotlight on education from any of our buildings? Brett?
Doesn't fall into the subject of that topic, but, and I'm wondering if you could just let us know our career performance, how that's going to be to try to help.
Yeah, so it was our second annual career period. It went very, very well. We had forty, it was forty-two vendors. I call them vendors, employers, or services. A lot of our students went through the career period, and it was actually kind of a job slash career that the students were in the spot for some reason. But we also had NTC, frequency hands-on activities down in our tech ed department, which we were very well received. And we had a panel of employers that kind of talked about getting a job, losing a job, those kind of things. So for our second year, I think it was fantastic, and Brad Potter, our student services staff, did a pretty good job. It's a pretty fantastic program.
Do they, do they do like follow-up survey up to the employers on what they thought?
Yeah, so they're doing follow-up surveys right now with students, and then the employers are, are phased to that.
Just a follow-up. Was there, I mean, a few of our local employers there as well?
Yeah, so they were, they were all local.
All local?
Yeah, local being central, yes. And they had the trades, the trade unions there.
So like, you're in Merrill? I mean, there's some of our dealerships, right?
Everybody from Church Mutual, to the Dums, to the Tony Market, to the Albers, to Dallas.
That's great.
It was very local.
Thank you.
I was at the board of directors, and Chamber, more of this, I mean, the function of that kind of thing. That was the first thing I said to them when I walked in. How much I appreciate that.
Yeah, I think it is, it's a great opportunity to keep some of our students local, you know, and granted, they're going to spread their wings and go, but it's always nice to have some state. So, thank you.
I have a question.
Go ahead, John.
I have a question for Ryan on the data that was provided. I noticed that, yeah, I'll wait for you. If you provide data, you know I'm going to stare at it, right? So I noticed that everything's trending on a downward slide on the total, but then I, the cohort group with the respective color, what's the explanation for that goes up as they go from sixth grade to eighth grade? The, the number of incidences are so like, it seems to be pretty much the pattern of like in sixth grade, there was 132 incidences, then the next year, that same group has up to 208, and the next group is 267. Is that, am I reading that right, or what's?
I don't have it in front of me.
So just in general, like if I, this is sixth grade, and we're moving down the years, it gets worse every year?
I would say the general trend, seventh grade is usually the year that you, I would say there's more level is like greater.
Okay.
And that's, I would say, not, other than that. A lot of, I left out on the bottom of this this year, because I traditionally offer this frequency numbers for individual events for kids that take place. You know, I advise you a lot of the numbers, but the example of last year, when I presented like 20 of the kids, according for almost 80% of the total.
Okay.
The thing that's going to vary with that is that the total number of kids, what size that group is from class to class.
So is the eighth grade class substantially larger than the sixth grade class due to transfers in from parochials, or, so you'd have more students, meaning more occurrences?
Yeah, I mean, in some of the cases, there's much of a 30, 30 students, or 20, five student difference. So there's certainly can be numbers in enrollment understood variance between the classes.
Okay.
You look at the eighth grade, like, the eighth grade didn't believe me. Brad Potter probably came over, visited eighth grade, because we were sharing with them some incentives that they could earn with our eighth graders going to MHS next year. We're sharing how that number in eighth grade, you look at in particular, 86, that's kind of.
Yeah, big drop from 200 to 86. So that would be a good break, example of a break in the trend.
Yeah, it's kind of on the, on the girdle. Class gets turned around, so.
Great.
I don't think it's always going to be like that, but it's positive.
You could say it, right?
It's good. It's really good, so.
No, it's good. I just noticed that the, I mean, it looks great on the total, obviously going down just almost uniformly every year. Then as you watch those cohort groups, I noticed that some of them either creep up as the years go on. So you, then you make a really good and valid point with that eighth grade class from, that's a huge drop.
Huge drop.
Congratulations. Somehow, if I think if you, we left it unchecked without you and Mark, it wouldn't be that way.
I think one of the valuable data points too, for next year, and we can't go back and recapture anything from the past, but how many students have received a disciplinary referral? And that, that's based to your point too, where you've got, you know, 40 who is creating 80% of the issues, to see how many kids are in, in that group of receiving at least one disciplinary referral.
Yeah, we, we remind our staff, because for us, it seems like, oh my gosh, you know, here at first was going to be verifying to start looking at numbers, and we felt like, oh my gosh, this is a bit crazy. But in reality, it hasn't been. Ultimately, it's actually looking much better. It comes out with the individual cases that you have to deal with.
And that's a great point. I mean, if you're using data, and you're not painting a subjective picture of, oh, it's bad. If you actually have the actual number of kids with one incidence, which if it's 40 and 86, that means that's.
The overwhelming majority of our kids are doing the right thing.
Right.
That's the, you know, that's not the stereotype sometimes that we pursue, that most of our kids do the right thing.
And I think at first, if you look at the data, it's alarming, because you see 346 incidences in 2003, or whatever the deal is, and you multiply that by the number of kids in the building, it looks like. But it is, one kid has 20, another kid has 30, whatever the case may be. So, thanks for the data.
Yep.
Thank you, Ryan.
And then also in this report is the MHS parent ambassador. I know we have people that can speak to that. It's been an exciting program this year, new this year, and it's really been a huge assistance at the, at the high school.
It's actually, if I could just say, it's, it's a fantastic program. I'm involved in it. It's, it's wonderful to see what Shannon, and Mr. Pot, and Mr. Murray, and Mr. Potter, and Mr. Miller, all the teachers do there. It's wonderful to be involved in it. It's, it's a great program.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Murray and Mr. Potter. Anything else for the spotlight? You'll see Jill's report for the Pine River School for Young Learners. Great news there is 100% of her screenings are complete. This is fantastic. There's a requirement of the program, then you can see the numbers too, for the total enrollment at 112, and then community 4K enrollment is 105. So very good numbers. Next is Karen's report. She is not available tonight. This is a report, and you can see it. It's, it's been happening through DPI since 1993. It gives us a lot of very important information when it comes to students, and students are typically brutally honest when they take the youth risk behavior survey. That data is not available. While they just finished taking this, I believe, in March, that data will not be available until sometime this summer after the, the school year. And so I'll make sure then that Karen can bring the results of that data, as well as comparing it back several years, so that you can see how those numbers are reflected. Because that's where the real, the real data becomes a reality. We've got the Director of Human Resources report. We'll say that recruitment has been very, very strong this year. The example I like to use is five or six years ago, we may have had two tech ed vacancies that would have scared the daylights out of us. And with Pete McConnell's re-retirement or resignation at the middle school, and then needing a position at the high school, we had nine candidates for two positions, which is very, very good. We couldn't have, we wouldn't have been able to say that five or six years ago. With the psychology position, we went one year when I was Director of Special Ed without a psychologist, because we had no candidate, zero. And we were even going into the, the programs at the UW's, and they just were not producing psychologists. And so that's really turned around as well. So I think with a competitive compensation plan certainly helps, and, and the good things that we're doing in the district, we saw some very, very good hiring, we're getting some very good candidates to choose from. Health insurance renewal, that's going to be on hold for a little bit. Right now, we're, we're continuing to negotiate. We've had an excellent track record, and the offers that they're giving us don't quite match that. And so that will be ongoing.
Is that an industry-wide deal, or is this, we have a good track record, I can't understand why an increase, unless it's nationwide, something, or?
Yeah, and we, we wanted a 0% increase. It, we did think we were asking for a lot there, because they're pocketing quite a few dollars off of us. And it's just, they're playing hardball. And so I know we had some very good ideas coming out of the committee, and that's what we're going for. We're given some deadlines, and we're kind of playing hardball back. They want our business, and they want our, our excess money to keep us at zero. So.
Can you speak to that?
Go ahead, John.
Yeah, and the finance committee, they came back at 8%. And so our idea was, is that we gave them until the next Wednesday to come back at zero. So they, we countered with a deadline. Otherwise, we would, we went to market to begin with, so that we can see if we can generate besides eight. But if they would have came back at zero, we abandoned the idea entirely. I did hear what the outcome of that deadline was. I don't know if we can get an update on.
They came back at 4%. And they came back with a negative, I think, 18% to go with their narrow network, which we are not interested in doing at this time. So we're pursuing the bidding process.
So if you kind of put that in perspective, one Wednesday, they offered a negative 5%, 0.5% on their narrow network, and the next Wednesday, it's negative 8%. One Wednesday, they want 8% increase, the next Wednesday, they want 4%. The only difference was seven days. So that tells you how that game is played. So now, at this point, the district is at market to see what all the other suppliers have provided.
Nobody likes to redo that paperwork, but somebody also wants their rates to jump up for really no apparent reason, and so we'll.
$500 and you did the paperwork.
We'll do the paperwork, absolutely. And at the time of this report, Eddie, then, as our new HR director, which also caused us, at the cabinet, it was, it was about a month ago, we were talking about onboarding and the process. We all went through as we got hired in the onboarding process. There was none. And so I'm excited to, to create an onboarding process. It's the only way to transition somebody into the district. And so really excited, the things that we're putting together, so that we can do some positive onboarding. It's not as easy as just hiring somebody and say, here's your responsibilities, go after it. We want to bring them in the correct way. And so having nothing to compare it to actually does help us a little bit, because we can make it what we want, and I can put my, my signature on there. That will be part of the onboarding process, and hopefully before July 1. They don't officially start until July 1. Current HR director is, is leaving a little bit prior to that, so we do want some overlap there. But that would totally be up to him, and we may even have to work with his current district to be able to provide some of these things for that, because he won't be under our contract officially until July 1. And count on, count on our new, especially our new administrators meeting you, spending some time with you, and then of course, with our new teachers. They're going to be in the new teacher mentoring program for three days, and so we'd like to invite board members in at that time, as well as just the school board, because that way you give, you're giving more time to get to know them. You see the food participation update. March being what it was, with, with days off and snow days and those things, we still remain fairly close to what was going on a year ago. Any questions at all? We're still projected for a profit, which is always very good. That wasn't the case five, six years ago, and so we've had profit ever since. You see the quarterly out-of-state travel report. We had teachers attending the Ohio State for their reading training. That's our title, teachers. And then we also had the, oh, the Illinois training for Pine River School for Young Learners. And that was attended by Joe and Joan. Any questions at all regarding out-of-state travel? You see Brian Dash's quarterly summary of purchases, purchases between 5,000 and 999,000. Didn't see anything that stuck out, stuck out on that report. Any questions for that? And the monthly budget update. Don't be alarmed by the current red. That will be transferred once reimbursement is received. And it's what we need to see at the end of the year. We don't want any red on that report at all, unless we close everything out. Question that comes from a board member regarding policy and. A question that comes from a board member regarding policy and administrative guideline for graduating student lunch account balances. So you can see the current policy there. One question that I did not, in my day, get a chance to ask Brian is, we do go to collections if needed, if it's gonna, if it's gonna be beneficial to us. And so it all depends on, on the, the debt owed by the family. And, you know, we don't want to get, go after a hundred and twenty dollar balance and only get twenty dollars back either, so. You can see the admin guideline for that one.
Question on that.
Go ahead, John.
Is there a, is there a credit limit, so to speak, where your highest amount, what's your highest risk you would assume out of an account?
We do not have a credit limit.
In terms of the maximum that they can charge?
Yeah, so I mean, like, just, I'm thinking along the lines of, say it is a hundred and twenty-five dollars over the lifetime of a student. When you reach a hundred and twenty-five dollars, some other measure needs to be taken place.
We, we, what we do is, actually, when it reaches, I think the cutoff right now is fifty dollars, if I remember, twenty-five or fifty, I can't.
Six twenty-five.
Blank that out. We, we start taking action, and we'll send them to collections before they get to even a hundred. So it's about fifty, I think, is the cutoff of collections.
So pretty low risk per con, either way.
So, right, and so we don't, what we don't do is ever cut off a kid. So they can still keep, at the high school, they eventually do get cut off. At the elementary and the middle school, they, we don't cut anybody off at the elementary, so we keep charging meals to their account. But basically, we, for example, we just, we just received a payment from collections of over two thousand dollars from one family. That's unusual. That was, that was the first time I've ever seen something that high. Usually, we're collecting, you know, a hundred or a hundred and fifty, or it's usually only goes up to about two hundred for a family. This was unusual to have a balance this high. But we, we do have, or to actually get a payment on a balance that high. We do have a couple of others that have pretty high balances like that, that we're not getting payment on. Question is, is then, does it go to small claims? And that's another thing that we haven't pursued yet that I know of with the CBD, but that's always an option as well.
I guess you should be looking, that amount of money is old. I think small claims is a viable opportunity.
Yeah.
Are there people that could pay, or is this something we're gonna, are we gonna invest more money? I think it's three hundred dollars to file small claims.
Yeah, and in most, most of our accounts, the vast majority are less than that. And then there's, there's some instances where we end up where a family has filed for bankruptcy. And then we have to write the account off for that. And there's, there's a very lengthy process that our collection agency goes through before they'll send something to small claims as well. And there's some legal, legalese in there that I've got to, I'd have to refer back to that I don't recall off the top of my head. As to the, the length of time it has to expire and the number of attempts that have to expire before you can go to collections for something like a food service account for a public school.
So if, if an account got to fifty dollars, for example, someone would reach out to the family and discuss the circumstance?
So, yeah, right now, the process is, the, there's a, there's a email and phone call notice that goes out when the account reaches, there's, I'm probably wrong on these tiers, but like minus five, minus fifteen, and so on, there's, there's communication that happens there. And then there's communication to the family, letting them know that if we don't receive payment at this particular point in time, we're gonna send your account to collections. And then we give them another fifteen to thirty days to respond to that, and then if we don't, then we'll send the account to collections. So there's multiple, there's multiple attempts. I don't recall off the top of my head if there's any attempts beyond the emails and the letters. You know, if there's an actual phone call from a principal or a teacher or anything like that, I, I don't think that's going on.
Okay. And then, in a, and I'm not saying it should happen, but in a for-profit world, you wouldn't reopen an account that went to collections.
Right.
Because you have no credit with that particular company and you forced a legal situation. Is it, if this happens in the fifth grade, do they reopen their account in the sixth grade and you go through it again?
Yes, because that would involve not providing meals to the student then. And so that's why we continue to accrue the debt, is because we've, we've taken the position, is that our policy as a district is that, in the elementary, we won't cut a child off. And the middle school will not get cut off as well, but they'll get a reduced meal, like a peanut butter and jelly sandwich and a pint of milk. And then at the high school, I believe high school is cut off at a certain point, aren't they?
I'm not sure. Let me go through the tiers of what people get.
I think, I think at the height, the, the high school, the upper grades, I think, yeah, for sure in the upper grades, there's a, there's an absolute cutoff where they don't even get the, the cheese sandwich or whatever it is. And that's the only time, that's the only age group that we, we cut the meals off. So if a family is in arrears and they've been sent to a collections and their, their child is in elementary school, they still will send the amount to collections. We write, we, we basically zero out their account that they owe at that time, and we send it to collections, kind of record a receivable on our books. And then they start over again at zero, and so they, they kind of start the whole process over again. And if that new balance goes in the hole again, we, we have to follow the same steps again before we can redo, send them to collections again. And that, that has to do with the Fair Credit Reporting Act. We can't, we can't, we can't include the current balance, if I remember correctly, we can't include the recurrent, the current balance that they have on file with, with the collection agency as part of the total of their new debt. So they, it's two separate debts that we have to treat, treat that way. So the only, the only way we get away from that is, we either, if they, if we want the, if we want the child to continue to receive meals, we basically have to charge the cost of those meals then to the district. Because the, the food, we can't give, we can't just simply give free meals because that's against the federal regulations for USDA. The, the food service program has to be reimbursed for any bad debt. It cannot absorb any bad debt whatsoever. So any uncollect, uncollectible accounts, we actually have to make a transfer from the general fund into the food service fund. So, so that's kind of where we're at with the whole thing.
And that's would all be under the understanding that they're neither qualified for free, but they could be qualified for reduced, so the payments you're not receiving could be reduced payments too.
Right.
Or they're just legit, not eligible for any of that and not paying their bill.
Right, so if we, if we, one thing we do do is, we check, for, for families that are in arrears on their payments, we do check to make sure that they're not on some kind of automatic certification list for free and reduced. And then we do, we, we do send out that information to the family, letting them know that if they are having trouble paying because of their income level, they do have the option to file for free and reduced and, and stop accruing the payments against their account for that. So we, we do make that, communicate that very clearly with the families. But most of the time, you know, the, the families either don't want, a lot of times, families don't want to file for free and reduced because of the stigma associated with it. And they don't want to be identified, they don't want their child identified in any way, shape, or form as being free and reduced or in poverty. So in that case, we don't send anybody that's designated as free to collections. That's, they don't get any charges against their account. We get fully reimbursed from the state and the federal government by that. The reduced parents, they're getting charged a reduced rate against their account, so they do, they would get sent to collections. And then anybody else beyond that would, would be susceptible to getting sent to collections.
And then one last question, just to understand the significance of the whole matter. Do you have any idea how much at any given time is in the arrears?
Yeah, it's a lot. It's.
No, you didn't, you're not supposed to say that. You're supposed, you're supposed to say we wasted ten minutes talking about it because it's twenty-five bucks.
No, no, it's, it's a lot of money. It's well over ten thousand dollars that's owed right now, probably even, I would even venture to say closer to twenty.
So then, my next question, because you didn't say it was little. Can you carry over the debt from one year to the next so that you can use it to justify some type of action to not allow a person to purposely go from one year to the next, to the next resetting their accounts, garnering new credit every time they re-enter the school year?
So that's actually an interesting question, and is something that I was looking into. Because our, actually, our policy, we have a, one of the, the food service policies on, on lunch accounts is that at the end of the year, any debt, any uncollected debt has to be zeroed out via transfer by the General Food Service Fund. Or, I'm, I'm sorry, by the, by a transfer from the General Fund to the Food Service Fund. We aren't doing that, actually. We're, we're carrying on the debt beyond the end of the school year. And there's, there's a little bit of confusion as to whether or not a district can legally do that or not. The statutes in, or not, the USDA guidelines state that uncollected debt should be zeroed out and reimbursed by the General Fund at the end of the school year unless reasonable steps are being taken to secure payment on the debt. So we kind of push the envelope of that phrase by saying they're in collections, so we're not going to do the, the transfer until collections tells us that the debt is uncollectible. And then at that point, I'll do a transfer from the General Fund to zero out that debt. So it's, it's an option. We could, at the end of the year, zero out all the debt, all the accounts, but it would require that transfer from the General Fund of probably another twenty thousand dollars currently, right now, to get us to zero. And then we would just start the cycle then each year over. Did I understand that question right?
We wouldn't want to do that, would we?
We, I, we don't really want to, no.
We would want to maintain the debt in the debtor's profile so that there's justifiable reason to issue no more credit.
Right.
Because it didn't move to collections.
No fresh start.
And, so I mean, I, I think, to belabor the point here longer, maybe this is something we could take on in finance to just look at the policy. Because it's not a matter of free, I mean, you could have separate policy for reduced if you want.
Yeah.
It's just a matter of neglecting to pay your bill.
Yeah. It's, it is a challenge.
The debt could stay too, you know, like, just because it's owed for one food, for food service account, doesn't mean that if we pay it off with the General Fund, you still don't owe the district that amount of money. It just would need to be recorded somewhere as a, as a debt to us. It's a receivable, so.
Yeah, yeah. It's, it's not a problem that's unique to Maryland. Every, every school district in the state and probably in the country has this problem. It's, it's, it basically comes down to the ethics of denying a child a meal or carrying bad debt from, from parents. And so a lot of districts will have multiple tens of thousands of dollars worth of uncollectible debt on their books because they, they don't want to cut a child off from receiving payments. And you've got families out there that either can't or will not, just simply will not pay the debt.
Yeah, and that wouldn't be my intention either. I think it's just a matter of whether or not we can, are there other benefits received at some other point that can be foregone because you don't have a clear balance?
Right.
Like a diploma.
Short answer, quick answer to that is, no, you can't do that. You can't withhold the diploma for any uncollected fees or, or debt whatsoever. You can deny them walking on a stage, but you can't deny them the diploma.
Well, subject of a committee meeting?
Yep.
Paul, did you follow question? What, roughly, the cost for collection, what are you talking, say on that ten thousand, what's it gonna cost to collect the ten thousand?
I don't, there's a, it's a percentage of each account. So when, when the agency collects a hundred dollars, they take a percentage, and I'm forgetting what that percentage is right now. It's like twenty-two or four percent, I think, of each transaction. I'd have, I'd have to.
Do they, do they attach expenses onto that too, or is that two to three percent cover the expenses also?
That, that, that's for the, that's the basic service fee for just doing a basic collection of debt. There's some other services that they offer beyond just making phone calls, the amount of debt collector does, and those are additional. And then there are additional fees that, so if they, if they were to do, take something to small claims, they would handle it for us, but then not only do we pay the small claim filing fee, but then we pay a fee for them to do all the legal work and they get an attorney involved and stuff like that. So I don't remember the staple fees off the top of my head.
Second, one last question. What, the profit from food service, does it come close to covering the debt? I didn't, I wasn't able to find it quick enough to, so.
I think so. I mean, we're, last year, we were, I can't, I can't remember the debt from last year, but it's, it's the profit that we're seeing right now, roughly equivalent to the amount of debt that we have on the close future.
Thanks, Brian. Maria?
I wonder, I mean, the stigma of free and reduced. I'm not familiar with that. How do the students, the identity, identify with it, or the parents that are not?
It's, it's more of the, it's more of the, it's more on the parent's side. They don't want to fill out the paperwork. They don't want to send it in, they don't want their name out there in any way, shape, or form. Students are in, students' identity as a free and reduced recipient is completely protected. And there's only certain exceptions where some, a, a staff member may even have access to the name of a, of a free and reduced student.
That, that's what I was concerned about, because the kids, they're under the.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's more of a, it's more of a stigma for the parent.
I think the only way, speaking personally, the only way that it would be determined is if, at the high school level, they go to grab a cookie, that person, that customer person's gonna say, no, you can't have that, that leave.
That, it, it will, it, it is, yeah.
So if you're the student behind there, you're gonna, okay, wing them, why not? So you, maybe you can put that together, but I think that's the only way, if you're trying to grab an extra from.
If you, if you have a below zero count.
Right, 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 right.
But some parents set limits too for their kids, so it could be just because parents set limits.
Right, yeah.
You can set limits, you can, you can.
You can try.
Yeah, yeah, it's, that, that information's very well guarded. There's very strict regulations that we have to follow to, to protect that.
I don't even have access to free and reduced.
Yeah, and, and I, I don't even access, get qualified for access to the information either. I get the numbers, the percentages, but I can't identify the kids.
Thank you, Brian.
Next, reconnecting again. Next is Kesha's report. A lot of good information in there regarding digital learning day. We had a hundred and ten staff members participate. Some of the information you're already aware of too, with Olivia Dackel and, and her award, with the coding award. National History Day, which I got to be a part of as a judge this year. It was another fantastic event. We had some kids that really, really did a nice job. I was very impressed. And then with the iPad deployment, I recently had the opportunity to observe Kesha at her technology meeting. And that process is going very, very well. I know the board participated in some of that tonight, but when you're talking about the numbers of students, it's, it's really working well and, and they're a great team. They're covering for each other, they're covering the help desk during the iPad deployment, so. Great job by, by Kesha in organizing and, and the entire technology team. They're really engendered, they're really doing a fantastic job with that. Anything else on Kesha's report, pique your interest? The Lincoln County Nurses Report. Unfortunately, I was not able to be present at the CTP meeting last week. I was down in Madison, Madison closing schools up here. So that's always really awkward when I look out and I see rain, and, and you guys saw something totally different. But it never fails, every, every spring we do that. But I do know that. But, uh, I do know that one of the questions was about threshold numbers, and I believe that was brought up by a board member and also answered at that meeting, so I understand it was good conversation. It was, uh, this two thousand nine-ten school year, I know, when we had to close and shut down, uh, the middle school for Thursday, Friday, and then the weekend with the H1N1 virus, which they say only survives for forty-eight hours on any countertop or desktop, but, uh, we got to the point where our numbers were extremely, uh, high for, for our teachers and our students. And I do like, in looking at the minutes of that meeting, that when it gets to a level, there's so many factors to consider. It's not just a cutoff point, but when it gets to the point where we don't have enough teachers to teach and students to learn, uh, that's when we need to start looking at, at, uh, at closing school. Uh, Superintendent's Report. Uh, excited to be partnering with Chippewa Falls. That conversation came out of an alt team meeting. Uh, Chippewa Falls is doing some great things. They're fairly close by, and so, not only do we have a, she would call it, we're going on a field trip to Chippewa Falls. They're going to host us. We get to see their version of the alt team meeting. I partner with Heidi, the superintendent. Kesha's already, uh, they've reached out to Kesha because the Chippewa Falls Technology Director there wanted to make sure that she's going to have somebody to collaborate with as well, and who better to collaborate with than Kesha? And so, that's going to be an informal event where we get to go and sit in on, on how they do things as an administrative team. And then, we're also invited, uh, because of this, uh, Heidi has invited us to participate in their Continuous Improvement Day. Uh, typically, it's only, uh, this school districts in that CISA, but she's reached out to us. Will certainly participate in that as well. Chippewa Falls and they partner with Student Education as well. And so, we're all going to be speaking the same language. They may do things a little bit differently than we do, and that's what we want to see for ourselves. At the time of this writing, the cabinet vacancy interviews, uh, was, were taking place with CNI. That was a, a, an interview process, and the field was narrowed for a second interview, uh, for CNI. And so, that'll be coming up a little bit later in our report. And then, uh, I need, I can't say enough about, uh, Mamma Mia. Even the set was very, very well constructed. It was, it was really, uh, a great play and a great musical to, uh, to be able to watch. Students did a fantastic job all the way around. They did a wonderful job. And I did notice the head bump and the performance that I was at with one of the characters, so... Anything else? Any questions for me on, on my report?
I have a few questions, John, if you don't mind. On the cabinet vacancy interviews, um, how many total candidates for each position were interviewed? Like, how many for CNI and how many for HR?
I'm, well, six for one.
Six for CNI?
Go back. Okay, exactly.
It was either six for one and five for one, or six for one. I, I can go look.
We had five for, we narrowed the field. I, I do not recall how many candidates we had. Somewhere in the neighborhood of ten to twelve. We narrowed that down to five for the first interview, and we narrowed the finalist interview, the second interview, down to two for that interview. With the, uh, HR, I believe we had about the same amount, or we had more candidates. That we looked at for their, and, and HR was a little different because it could be public, uh, public school sector, it could be private. So, we didn't put everything in the weekend. Cindy posted that position in, uh, some of the HR, uh, journals or, or their newsletters, and so, they could, uh, apply by a variety of different venues. After we reviewed everybody's applications, we had one, two, three, four, five, six that we brought in, and that was a one interview process. Uh, we found our person, uh, in that first interview, and that was Eddie.
And then, the candidate pool, how many were local, like, from our, from our district?
Uh, with HR, none, with CNI, one.
Thank you.
And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Sample. Next on the agenda will be the committee reports. Let's start with the Curriculum, Technology, Pupil Services Committee. We had the draft minutes from the April tenth, twenty nineteen, committee meeting attached. Maria Volpe, uh, Chair, and, uh, other members of the committee are here. If there's any questions, does anyone have any questions for the CTP committee this evening? Hearing none, we'll move next to the Finance, HR Committee. We did have the draft minutes available for the April third, twenty nineteen, committee meeting. Uh, John Smith, Chair, and the other members of the committee are available. Anyone have any questions for the Finance, HR Committee this evening? All right. The next committee would be the Facilities Committee. The draft minutes from that April third, twenty nineteen, committee meeting were provided. Myself as Chair and other members of the committee are available for questions. Anyone have any questions? I see Brett Sand come up.
A couple. So, the first one, what are the thoughts on the model location building? The various locations? Or what are the various locations?
I'll ask Dr. Sample to speak to that, please.
We've had an update since the time of this writing, and so, it's, uh, tomorrow, we are taking a tour at, uh... Does that see it? Yes, tomorrow, we're taking a tour at ten o'clock. Uh, that'll be myself, Dale, Kesha, Shannon, um, the, the teacher, are going to head over to City Hall. While they can't, as a city, advertise their space, we can certainly reach out to them, and that's what we did. Uh, right now, they're coming in at, uh, two hundred dollars a month, which includes maintenance, cleaning, everything else. So, the only thing, the part of the puzzle that's missing right now, after our tour tomorrow, would be, uh, the timeline for moving out, and I've been having difficulty reaching, uh, Fremont. And before, their original date was June eighth. We'd like to push it to July eighth. In an email, they did say they can be flexible, but I've been, I've had difficulty reaching them by phone. So, tomorrow was the tour of City Hall. It looks to be a, a great facility. I know that, uh, Shannon, you've already been there, and they had talked about, uh, I know that Dave Johnson's, uh, very excited at the potential of having us there, the possibility. There was a, uh, door with the single entrance, which is a separate entrance, and it's close to the police station, too, so it's safe. But that door was broken, and I think within a matter of a couple of days, that door was fixed, and he, he got right on it. So, could be a very good partnership. Uh, we will certainly bring that to committee, though, once we take the tour, and then it will go to the full board for approval.
Do we know why this is coming out, and are they, are they known for not being responsive, or...
I, to be honest, I, I do not know. I do not know. There are a couple of events coming up where I should be able to see, uh, some people from Fremont, either Todd or Renee, and so, I'll, I'll be sure to connect with them there. So, I'm not sure. I do know they're coming back tomorrow. I do know that they're also adding employees. That's been well publicized. And so, they need that space back, and that's what I would assume that they need the space for, for added employees.
And, you know, like, just, uh, this golf shed, but I want to do it, but it's just not old. They're paying for it. They're, they're asking the district to pay for it. What's...
They, they were looking at the fundraising opportunities. They presented, uh, some plans, temp, uh, initial proposal to Mr. Bergman to review not only things such as location, but costing and what they would have for options. To our knowledge, it was informational only, and no decisions were, were made. It was just, uh, here's what we're thinking as a booster organization to have a goal going forward, and is this even feasible at, uh, at our current site here at the high school? Sure, Maria was raising her hand as well.
On the model location, um, and I'm not terribly clear, and I'm sorry, the partnership, the collaboration with NTC in that model building, are they involved in the conversations at this moment with regard to what they're going to do, or how does that work, Dr. Sample?
None at this moment. Uh, we don't anticipate. As a courtesy, certainly, we're going to share this with them, especially after our tour tomorrow. Uh, they, with our partnership with NTC, they, uh, we split the cost of the teacher, we split the cost of the eight fifty fifty with NTC. So, our main thing is we don't want any services to be disrupted due to the timing of the move, and, and I have no reason, nor does Shannon or Maria have any reason to believe that it's a doing thing about our partnership. It is important for the students of that program, especially when we're dipping down into, uh, juniors and seniors as our youngest students, that it is separate from the high school. We have looked at various locations here, and so, I know that we shared that with NTC as well.
Okay, so, NTC is aware of the, the fact that the location is going to need to change?
They will be aware as soon as we make that, that, that call tomorrow, or that, uh, that we do the visit tomorrow. So, yes, we will let them know.
Okay.
I don't anticipate that being any change to our partnership, but yet, we certainly will let them know.
Okay.
Try not to get ahead of the committee and the board as well.
Gotcha.
For the booster shed, so if the booster club decides to raise the funds on their own to get this building or shed, now, do they have to go out to bid for a certain item to whoever's going to help build this, like we do, or can they just contract with anybody to get this building, if it does happen, built?
They're separate. They would be separate from the district. If it's the boosters doing it by themselves, they wouldn't have to follow any of our policies for that to happen.
Okay.
I just had, I was at the Facility Committee, and that shed was presented extremely preliminarily, almost like, uh, like an idea. Yeah, kind of like, in an ideal world, this is what golf would want. But there's a lot of factors, um, especially with strategic planning and land use that would come into play, so it's pretty far down the road, I think.
You never know. It could be far down the road, or it could be here tomorrow. So, with the way the days are moving, you never know.
No, it won't be here tomorrow.
I'm just saying. Sometimes the days are going to let you.
Two items, two que, uh, one question each. On the, the City Hall move, uh, keeping in mind that we're going to share parking with City Hall. You know, I know where they are at. They have plenty of parking. I don't know how many kids are bringing cars there, or students are bringing cars there. Is that going to be a consideration that has to be looked at?
I do want to see the parking that's going to be available. Uh, Shannon's got a great idea of how many cars are there at any one time with the split program in two sessions. They're not all there at once, which is really going to help. So, I want to make sure that Dave Johnson understands how many spaces we can, we, we will.
On a busy day, City Hall parking lot is full. Jeremy sees that, too.
Give me a trap shoot, do you?
Yeah.
Get a parking spot, or park, by the way, the, the flip doctor's office.
Ooh, across the street in the parking lot, you can go. Okay, then, uh, School Forest question. The, the range? What kind of range are we talking? Talking about, uh, firearms range, or bull range, or?
Archery.
Archery range? Okay, thank you. That's all, thank you. All right. Thank you, Brian. Any other questions for the Facilities Committee? All right. Next would be the Policy Committee. The draft minutes from the April second, twenty nineteen, committee meeting were provided. Paul Brew as Chair and other members of the Policy Committee are available for questions. Any questions at this time on the, on the minutes from that committee meeting? Go ahead, John.
I think I can ask it here. It's actually in regards to one of the policies that'll be embedded in the consent agenda, but so that I don't need to ask to be removed later. The public requests, suggestions, or complaints, uh, there was a wording change that said that... Ninety-one thirty, under Relations. Towards the bottom, it says, uh, "The material in question may not be temporarily withdrawn from use pending final resolution of the matter." And I can see that being right or being wrong, so I just wanted to clarify. We want to not, we want to restrict ourselves to never be able to temporarily withdraw the item.
We called that out in the committee meeting.
Okay.
And made the decision that it should stay in there as is. So, we did discuss that, John.
Gotcha.
As the state would...
Yep. Sorry, Paul. I didn't make that jump in.
Thank Maria for running the meeting until I got there.
Thank you.
Thanks, Maria.
Thanks, Brian.
You're so welcome.
Anything else, Mrs. Yen? All right. Moving, moving right along to unfinished business, then. Uh, we have the revision of the Bylaw zero-one-five-five on committees. We had tabled that at the March meeting. For more information on open records requirements and substitutions, as going with the posted roll call. Would you like to motion that first and then have some discussion, or would you like an update first? Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a discussion. All right, we have a motion by Paul, second by Maria. Quick update on my part was I, I contacted Wasby just to make sure, um, you know, what we're talking about, and I'll have Dr. Sample add on anything that he heard that may have been different from Boardman Clark. What Tammy puts together when we're posting in any meeting, there is some wording that she needs to continue to put on there, uh, talking about potential for quorums and that his advisory and the decision will not be made that evening. As long as the wordings were put on there, then, as that, uh, bylaw was drafted or revised, that would be fine. That would meet the open records requirements, the open meeting law requirements. That was similar to what you found out from Mike from Boardman Clark's.
Yes, it was, it was identical to what I found out, uh, from Mike Jolka. It's the way we post it, talking about the quorum language as well, and reflects the possibility that substitute members may be present. And so, we would be fine after that. He didn't see any issues.
Any other questions or discussion on, on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Moving on to the Board of Education business. First item is the approval of Washington DC trip for next summer. There was an attached topic summary sheet from Ryan Martinovich and Jolene Weikes. Do we have a motion this evening? Jeremy?
Recommend a motion to approve the eighth grade trip to Washington DC and New York City for June twenty twenty.
Motion by Jeremy, do I have a second? By Maria. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. The, the next item on the agenda is the approval of twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, summer maintenance project with an attached topic summary sheet from Dale Bergman. The recommended motion. Do we have a motion this evening? Paul? Move to approve the listed summer maintenance projects for two thousand nineteen and twenty twenty as funding allows. Motion by Paul, do I have a second? Second by Jeremy. Any questions or discussion? John?
Yeah. This is either for Dale or Brian. The, the slittest summer projects, I, they didn't, I don't believe we saw it at the last Facility Committee, because a lot of these projects are from the past, and then they carry over, because we had the funding before. But between then and now, we had our policy changed on purchasing and bidding. And so, my concern was is, is, are, when we prove this tonight, are we approving that it's, uh, we're going to spend this money, or this, or will these dollar amounts come back to us again for a subsequent approval? Basically, I'm asking is, were every one of these dollar amounts pushed through the new policy, and are they compliant?
I guess some of them have, John, some haven't, so I would really love to add them to the, 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 to[642.04]
I'm pro- motion to approve the policy eighty-four twenty, school safety and emergency preparedness as a first reading.
Motion by Paul, do I have a second?
Second.
Brett? Any questions or discussion on the motion or this topic? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is policy eighty-four sixty-two point zero one, threats of violence. Policy committee also has a recommended motion there, do I have a motion this evening? Paul?
Motion to approve policy eighty-four sixty-two zero one, threats of violence as a first reading.
Motion by Paul, do I have a second?
Second.
By Maria. Any discussion or questions on the motion or this topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next topic is our ongoing community conversation outcomes. Dr. Sample, would you like to go through anything for updates on the?
Sure, we'll see this format for the next few months and then last, next Wednesday is our last strategic planning meeting, then we're going to present the strategic plan to the board. We've got an executive action committee on, meeting on Monday, so as we wrap this up, I anticipate this is going to roll over and change a little bit to be enhanced probably because we're going to continue to keep the community conversation in front of us, the title of the Strategic Planning Committee, a community conversation. So, the compensation plans, I kind of alluded to it before, has been great work and excellent example of procedural areas that our district has tackled. You know, one of the things that I mentioned earlier too, our partnership with Chippewa Falls and others, if we gain information, we learn from others and they learn from us, that collaborative dialogue. We're all in this business together and that's of educating students and so we share freely. This would probably be one of two exceptions, we don't share a compensation plan because that is competitive and it is meant to retain and attract quality staff and administrators. And while I know that John Hagenmeister and myself used to share some information about virtuals and all of that, that's also extremely competitive. So, we don't want anybody duplicating BBA, we don't want anybody duplicating our compensation plan. So, I didn't want to misspeak by saying we believe in collaboration of everything because it's all for the students, but we do protect a few things. The STEAM and FabLab with the elementary students has been going fantastically. We had Josh go down to elementary buildings and engaging, I believe he's worked with one hundred and eighty-seven elementary students so far and so they're very excited. Some of them want to skip right over to middle school and go straight to the high school after fifth grade, but can't love that. So, he's been generating a lot of excitement and there's going to be more to come with our elementary major spaces too, as we start to fine tune those programs. And then internships, I think it had come up probably a year ago about utilizing our own high school students at the elementary and so we started doing that. The students are not only gaining a great experience of what it's like to be an employee, show up on time, work with kids, our young kids love it when a student can come in and so that's a mentoring type process. Very similar to the premise that the Big Brothers Big Sisters bases their entire philosophy on, so that's been very well received as well. That's that.
All right, thank you, Dr. Sample. Anyone have any questions or comments or discussion on the community conversation outcome updates? Otherwise, hearing none, we're going to move into the consent agenda. First of all, I'd like to ask if anyone would like anything pulled from the consent agenda? Brett?
Which one? Which one's that Brett?
Letter D.
Letter D?
D as in David? Should we act on that first? Or do we?
I think you do have consent agenda, then discuss the item pulled off.
Fair enough, then I would, anyone else have anything else they would like pulled? Otherwise, I would be looking for a motion with the exception of the pulled item.
I just, I don't know, can I pull the policy six four four zero, cooperative purchasing? I don't, I just maybe, I don't know if that's something to pull or if I just have discussion on it.
You would have to pull it to have that said discussion.
Thank you.
Like that pulled as well. Anything else that we would like pulled at this time from the consent agenda? Otherwise, if we could have a motion with those two things noted, please Maria.
I'd move to approve consent agenda items A, B, C, and E, which includes second readings of policy eighty-five ten wellness, policy eleven thirty, thirty-two thirty, and forty-two thirty, conflict of interest, policy twenty-two sixty, non-discrimination and access to equal education opportunity, policies thirty-one twenty-two and forty-one twenty-two, non-discrimination and equal employment opportunity, policy fifty-five seventeen, student anti-harassment, policy thirty-three sixty-two and forty-three sixty-two, employee anti-harassment, policy thirty-one twenty, employment of professional staff, policy fifty-one eleven, eligibility of resident, non-resident students, policy fifty-one thirteen, open enrollment program inter-district, policy fifty-one fourteen, non-immigrant students in visitor programs, policy fifty-one twelve, use of tobacco or nicotine by students, policy sixty-two twenty, budget preparation, policy sixty-two thirty-five, fund balance, policy eighty-three thirty, student records, policy ninety-one thirty, public requests, suggestions or complaints, policy ninety-one fifty, school visitors, policy thirty-two thirteen and forty-two thirteen, student surprovision and welfare, policy fifty-one twelve, entrance age, policy fifty-five hundred, student code of conduct, policy suspension, pre-expulsion, expulsion, policy seventy-four forty point oh one, video surveillance and electronic monitoring, and policy eighty-four sixty-two, child abuse or neglect, minutes of the March sixth, twenty nineteen, March thirteenth, twenty nineteen, and April third, twenty nineteen meetings, claims, vouchers, and receipts totaling three million two hundred seventy thousand three hundred eighty-one dollars and sixty-nine cents, and donations totaling nine hundred four dollars and sixty cents.
Motion by Maria, do I have a second?
I'll second, Maria, everyone's policy seventy-four forty? Where was I? You had, you went to seventy-four forty oh one? Was seventy-four forty supposed to go to?
I did not include sixty-four forty per Linda's request.
No, no, seventy-four forty for approval for second reading. Magic fingers. You went from fifty-six ten to seventy-four forty oh one.
Yeah, it was as written.
Is it the same policy?
I'll revise that to include seventy-four forty.
Thank you, I'll second.
Good catch, Paul.
All right, thank you. All tho- all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carry. Our first pulled item on the consent agenda is item D. Far away there. Correct, if you'd like to start the discussion.
Like I said, when we approve personnel reports, this is disappointing, it's taking us out of what we see. Just, or obviously we have to approve that, right, that's the right rationale?
I see extension for that to be longer.
Okay. And is it man's consent that's needed in that? Do you need nine people to say yes to approve that or?
Majority. I believe it's majority.
Majority, right, okay.
Any other questions or discussions? For the motion, ask for a motion on each one of these separately, since they were pulled separately, I would believe, so do we have a motion?
Motion. You want to make a motion?
Sorry, I, I, no, go ahead, Paul.
Move to approve, yeah, I lost it. Item D from the consent agenda.
All right, we have a motion by Paul, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by John. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Yes.
Any abstentions? Motion carries.
What's the count?
Five, three is my belief on a, on a voice vote and visualization with some hands raised accordingly.
Thanks.
The other pulled item was policy sixty-four forty. Linda, if you could lead the discussion on the cooperative purchasing revised policy, please. All right.
I just have a question on that cooperative purchasing policy now, does that include our vehicles, our, thank you. Everything that we may need to purchase, I guess what is the difference in cooperative purchasing? And if I'm reading this correctly, we should be going out to bid on every item that we may be entitled to have purchased, is that correct?
Thank you, Brian. Brian to come up?
So, consent part of categories of equipment supplies, we purchase the manner of advertising for bid and awarding contracts. So, that means that if we are going out to make purchases on vehicles, dump trucks, whatever we may need, we should be going out to bid, is that correct?
No.
No.
Um, the bidding procedures are under a separate policy.
Okay, I just don't know if that included that because I see equipment and supplies, so I didn't know if the equipment goes under like your dump trucks or?
Yeah, all of that would fall under policy sixty-three twenty, which we just rewrote. And then, um, and the new policy is on the board, is on the website, but the new guidelines aren't, I was just checking that today. So, there's, there's a, we wrote up a set of new guidelines. There's a, the new tiers for prices for what would require bidding, RFPs and stuff like that.
I think I just have those two things up for me and some policy that I really wanted to talk about, but I appreciate it.
For further clarification, the cooperative purchasing policy is meant to take advantage of like group buying powers, if I understand this correctly. And so, if we have CSN nine, DPI, whoever is leveraging the mass of larger buys that we are, we're authorizing the administration to collectively, I guess, get the cheaper discount and participate in those things.
Yeah, I, example, we, we are in a cooperative for purchasing, work comp liability, and those insurance, on their own, we would bid those out, but we go through cooperative and so the cooperative takes care of deciding when to go out to bid.
Okay, now I understand, I'm sorry, I apologize, I didn't know the equipment was included in, sometimes your equipment could be your dump truck, you know, things like that.
Yeah, yeah, there could be, yeah, there could be instances when we would want to bid that out ourselves and there could be instances where we would, you could buy that as part of a cooperative purchasing agreement. Actually, I can offer vehicles, but there are groups out there where you can actually purchase through them and they've negotiated certain rates on different pieces of equipment, services, and so on, and creating vehicles, I suppose. Computers are a big, a big one that will, times you can get sometimes.
So, the plug, plug stuff, can I?
Yeah, kind of plug stuff is a little bit simple.
And CSN nine provides us with services too. If we're, if we were looking for a half-time speech and language therapist, we'd have a difficult time finding a half-time. But CSN nine will purchase a speech and language therapist and we would purchase fifty percent of their services because Tomahawk needs one in fifty percent too, and so that's where we come to services.
No, I was just asking, maybe I misinterpreted it because sometimes, you know, your equipment stays things, but that's all I had questions on, thank you.
Dale?
Example, in the, for equipment, when we had the safety grant stuff, CSN purchasing is the same one. And factories and suppliers of the two areas, people that give more handling place, or for the, that's example of their purchase similarly. They'll bring a bunch of districts together to leverage a large volume of volume of equipment like that, or to get their price from people.
Okay, thank you.
Paul? Dale, when buying vehicles, can you use a state purchasing pool to buy? An Ohio shop, law enforcement has, there's a state bid established for vehicles and some equipment, so I don't know.
We do get the state rates for that.
Okay.
Purchase or recently leased vehicles and we do get state, we rent with the environment that which families that statewide that's able to leverage different, all the factors of vehicles, all makes and models, who have the best pricing.
Yeah, we, you know, law enforcement went to that about thirty years ago, the state bid. And we were buying, drill the vehicle, the dealers nuts in town, but we were buying vehicles for about five thousand dollars less and they could sell it.
Yeah, we had buy-in usually released, but the state process will stretch, leverages every dealer in the state's, who are getting their pricing.
Okay, thank you.
Right.
There's no other questions or discussion, do we have a motion on that, policy sixty-four forty?
I'll move to make a motion to approve the sixty-four forty policy, cooperative purchasing policy.
The second reading is?
Okay, is the second reading?
Okay, a second by Maria. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next would be items for future meetings. Do we have any board members with items for future meetings, Maria?
I would like to know if we have options for Wi-Fi on the buses. For athletes and activities, what, if we have options. That's the first one that comes to mind. And then something we had talked about just very vaguely a while back ago about students leaving the district and following up as to the why they're leaving the district and I'm just wondering if perhaps we could get an ongoing, a running list and reasons why. Then, something I really like, the adopt a board member program. Mr. Smith and I are at the high school every month and learn plenty from Mr. Murray and Mr. Potter. And I think that that's a really valuable conversation, a really valuable tool, I'm just wondering if that's happening in the other schools, maybe we could get an update as to how board members view that interaction or the program in general and how we see that moving going forward. And then, if we could have something on, apparently we're the atop, top apprenticeship school in the state.
For numbers?
Yeah, for numbers, so if we could get a presentation on that and toot our own horn as to, you know, how great the district is doing with that, that would be fantastic.
To your point on adopt a board member, I was adopted by Kate, so I get to go there, and I get there, I'll get some of their monthly.
We'll be.
CEO assemblies? Um, just some of those stuff that we do there, and that's our idea, much in our achievement, so it's very fun, I enjoy it, so.
Oh, it's great.
We'll gather all our thoughts on that and make sure we have the list and we'll bring that as a, an item on the.
I want to get done.
Are you an orphan, Jeremy?
Are you feeling left out?
I am an orphan.
We will, we will come up with a plan on the. I want a school with taller kids.
They want shorter board members, so we're going to have to figure that out.
It took a long time before Maria and I were officially adopted, makes it feel any better.
Yeah, we were just fostered for a little while and then Shannon sort of decided that we'd be adopted.
Linda, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to go over kind of what we just discussed in that policy I pulled, is the bidding on vehicles and equipments and dump, dump trucks and how we go about making those decisions when we go out to bid or when we choose to use other places to purchase vehicles.
Okay.
I mean, if we are following the policy and how is it being followed, the steps and procedures and how we take care of that.
Okay. Brett?
I'm necessarily, just a question, I can't find it. Ken Everett, someone I think you wrote, you're going to come to us with how the position that we hired for the full-time, someone's coming, I can't find it, whatever it was.
So, we are going to bring that forward. I'll bring that, next one.
So, we'll be bringing that to the?
Yeah, okay. I just couldn't remember where it was.
Excellent.
Kind of piggybacking what Maria brought up of the boss thing, which Ms. Troyer mentioned earlier, and helping out your job, I'm sure this can even be brought to the board level. Not so much Wi-Fi on the bus, which is a fantastic idea, but I kind of wondered, not only for athletes, but also for students who live in rural areas, they have access to Wi-Fi internet. What is the process or is there even a process in place where they can do their homework on iPad, but they don't need an internet connection? Like it can be an actual app that they can just do or an assignment that you on the iPad? Where, like I said, for students, for athletes who have other commitments, but also for students who don't have media access at all. So, I'm not sure if I'd be in a formal representation, can I have you come to us at the board level or am I getting the working order, is there, am I asking for that?
No, no.
No, and actually, if you, if you don't mind me speaking, we've actually talked about that at the CTP committee and had Kesha weigh in on that, so maybe we just need to revisit that.
Any of the board members have items for future meetings?
Oh, I'm sorry, I did have one, or five, so. I would like to note, Mr. Prue is negatively not in. One of the things that we had heard about, Paul and I at NTC, is the idea of esports.
The what?
Esports.
Yes.
Um, so, I was just wondering if we could get some information on esports at MAPS, but I happened to be at the high school in my parent ambassador role last Friday and mentioned it to Mr. Miller, who apparently Kesha and Mr. Miller are already on top of this. So, if we could just kind of, I don't know if it's too early or if there's enough information to kind of bring that to the board and talk about esports, I think that'd be great.
You can update what we're doing.
Yeah, yeah, that'd be great, it sounds very exciting.
When I pick my curiosity, I got to wait till the next board meeting?
You do.
That's correct, Jeremy. Or you're going to get a look from Mr. Prue.
It's overrated, Jeremy, trust me.
Anyway, any other items to be added for future meetings, thank you Maria.
Can I just ask one follow-up question, how long before we will see some of these requests? I see there are a couple of them that we've already made, have come to light now, but how long and potentially do we, are we, I guess, how long do we have to wait to see some of these things that we're asking for, to come up on the meeting?
Most of these will be next month, where some of them are just up, just letting you know what we're already doing. The ones are, are potentially know what Wi-Fi on the buses, not yet, I think, but yeah, most, most of these can be next month. Most of them look like that.
And I guess that's what I, that's what I'd ask is that, I mean, I think these are pretty straightforward, at least to give a preliminary opinion on, is that they would be addressed next month.
So, what do we do through the committee, should we continue to go through the committee or if there's a request for, from someone that's not on our name, do we bring that to a whole board then? Or how would you like that to happen, or would we invite Jeremy to that committee meeting?
Who's going to say to invite you?
I should say that.
Okay, or I just want to make sure that everyone will be able to know what they want to hear at the committee meeting, maybe we only want a couple representatives.
Tammy, is everybody in, everybody information on the calendar invite for the committee meetings? Yeah, so anybody could go. If you look at the agenda and see that there's something of interest perhaps, you know. But I can email you, Jeremy, and let you know, let you know when we're going to talk about, thanks, Jeremy.
All right. On the agenda, we do keep a, per board members' past requests, we have a standing item for board decision financial impact summary.
Oh, I'm sorry, Kevin, can we go back just for a second? I apologize. I'm sorry, but we can cross some of.
Mr. Prue capped that at four and you're at six.
I was, I was at five, and actually, I'm going to take some off here, so now I'm negative.
That's good, that's good.
Creative nonetheless, right?
On number three of the unfinished items for future meetings, I think we're done with that, sick kids at school determination to send home and what's the threshold? Yeah, so we're done.
Item three.
Tonight, yeah, so we're done.
So, what we do is we leave them on there until we finish the discussion and the potential motion that evening, so yes, we would update this tomorrow.
I'm done now, Kevin.
All right, thank you. Next on the agenda is a reminder of the radio schedule, Dr. Sample and I will be on the air tomorrow at Blue Jay seven thirty, radio station eight fifteen AM. Future meetings, strategic planning executive committee meeting will be on Monday, April twenty-second at one thirty in the boardroom. Organizational meeting for the board will be on Monday, April twenty-second at five thirty PM in the boardroom. The strategic planning committee meeting is Wednesday, April twenty-fourth at five thirty PM at the high school library. Safety committee meets on Monday, April twenty-ninth at twelve thirty PM in the boardroom. Facilities committee meeting is on Wednesday, May first at three thirty here in the boardroom, followed directly by finance, HR committee on that Wednesday, May first at four thirty in the boardroom. The next curriculum technology pupil services committee meeting will be Wednesday, May eighth, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, excuse me, we're not going back in time, at four thirty PM in the boardroom. The next Maple Grove governance board meeting is Monday, May thirteen, twenty nineteen, at six thirty PM out at Maple Grove. Head start policy council is Tuesday, May fourteenth, twenty nineteen, at five thirty PM at Pine River School for Young Learners. The next regularly scheduled board meeting will be on Wednesday, May fifteenth, twenty nineteen, five thirty PM here in the boardroom. Next I'll be calling for contemplated motion to adjourn into executive closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes under section nineteen point eight-five, paren one, paren C, considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises of responsibility. Paren F, considering financial, medical, social, or personal histories or disciplinary data of specific persons, preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems, or the investigation of charges against specific persons except where paren B applies, which if discussed in public would be likely to have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such history or data or involved in such problems or investigations. And one eighteen point one-two-five, for the purpose of considering student early college credit and start now applications that may involve discussions of confidential student records and to discuss other matters involving student records and personal histories that if discussed in public would likely have a substantial adverse effect on the reputation of the persons discussed. The purpose of the closed session is for review of performance evaluation data of teachers for consideration of continued employment, renewal of teacher contracts for the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year and for consideration and potential action approving issuance, supplementary notice of consideration of non-renewal of teacher contracts for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year and to consider and act upon parental requests for student opt-out of state assessments, including the potential for a closed session to review the specific specifics applicable to the affected students if the discussion of such an open session would be likely to have an adverse effect upon the reputation of such students pursuant to section nineteen point eight-five, paren one, paren five of Wisconsin statutes. Any such closed session shall be immediately followed by reconvening an open session for further consideration and ultimately, action upon the parental request. Do I have that motion?
So.
Motion by Paul, second by Linda. Do we have a roll call vote, please Tammy?
Matt Sashberg?
Aye.
Paul Prue?
Aye.
Brett Waller?
Aye.
Jeremy Ratliff?
Aye.
John Smith?
Aye.
Maria Bothe?
Aye.
Lynn DeNealy?
Aye.
Kevin Lake?
Aye.
Recceus for five minutes as we clear the room and allow time to turn microphones off, etc., to prepare for closed session, thank you.